Good afternoon. This public hearing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, July 29, 2015, and the time is 2:00 P.M. This is a public hearing on a resolution to amend Section 81.49 of Article 81 of the New York City Health Code regarding a sodium warning. I am Martha Robinson, Associate General Counsel of the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Also here today are, from my left, Sonia Angel, who is the Deputy Commissioner for Prevention and Primary Care; Thomas Merrill, the General Counsel of the Department; and on my right, Michelle Robinson, who is the Deputy Executive Director of the Bureau of Food Safety and Community Sanitation. The purpose of today's hearing is to elicit public comments and information to assist the Board of Health in determining whether to adopt this proposal. A notice of intention and notice of public hearing was published in the City Record on June 23, 2015. A copy of the first page of the notice of intention has been provided to the reporter to include in the record. I am going to call on people who are registered to speak in the order in which they registered. Every speaker is allowed five minutes, and ten speakers were pre-registered to speak today. If anybody else wishes to speak, they can range with Ms. Burdanik and the outside and sign up. When you come up to speak, please pronounce your name properly and provide any affiliated organization if you have one. The first speaker registered today is Michael Jacobson.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Jacobson. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Science in the Public Interest, a consumer organization based in Washington, D.C. and really appreciate the opportunity to testify today on this groundbreaking and vitally important public health initiative. The department's proposal would require a warning icon next to ultra-high-sodium dishes served at chain restaurants. That would inform consumers that those dishes contain more sodium than they should consume in an entire day. Such an icon would both change consumers' choices and spur restaurants to improve their offerings. And it's an extraordinarily conservative approach, setting a limit, a threshold, at 2,300 milligrams, a whole day's worth, instead of half a day's worth or some other lower level that also is problematical for the public's health. Americans consume far more salt or sodium than they should, and that excess is contributing in a major way to cardiovascular disease. Because almost everyone consumes too much sodium, public health approaches need to be implemented, and there are few other areas in which public health could do more to save lives and reduce health disparities. The simple reduction each day from the current consumption of a teaspoon and a half of salt to one teaspoon could, according to a University of California, San Francisco study, prevent about 60,000 to 120,000 cases of coronary heart disease and save 44,000 to 92,000 lives per year nationally. As the department has noted, cardiovascular disease is the leading cause of death in New York City, with almost 17,000 deaths in 2012. The burden is disproportionately borne by communities of color, with premature stroke mortality nearly three times as high among non-Hispanic Blacks compared to Whites and Asians, and hypertension cases more common among non-Hispanic Blacks and Hispanic individuals than Whites and Asians. Requiring an icon for the highest-sodium foods, these are dishes that contain a whole teaspoon of salt or more, could well prevent many of those early deaths. And who really wants to pour a teaspoon of salt on their slice of meatloaf or bowl of pasta? Consumers aren't doing that, but restaurants are, and consumers have the right to know so they can protect their health from these dangerous dishes. The warning icons would alert consumers to some dishes that appear to be healthy but are loaded with salt. For instance, despite being on the lighter-choices menu, Chili's restaurant chain's Margarita Grilled Chicken Dinner that boasts only 640 calories actually has 2,430 milligrams of sodium. And Baja Fresh's Tortilla Soup delivers a whopping 2,600 milligrams of sodium, despite having only 270 calories. Chipotle, many other companies have meals that are that high in sodium. We also know that this kind of commonsense public health initiative can work for both consumers and restaurants. A recent survey found that 72% of respondents favoring warnings on high-sodium foods. In King County, Washington, at Seattle, sit-down restaurants responded to sodium labeling by decreasing the sodium content significantly. However, once again, the restaurant industry is opposing a measure that would protect its customers' health. The New York State Restaurant Association dismisses the proposal as only adding to the mountain of red tape. The association also warned or worried that other localities might require other kinds of ingredient labeling. I hope the Board of Health would dismiss such knee-jerk, thoughtless opposition and keep its eyes on the prize. In this case, the prize is protecting the health of New Yorkers from hidden risks on innocent-looking dinner plates. The bottom line is that this is the right thing to do and the right time to do it. It builds on the National Salt Reduction Initiative you established in 2010 that follows the advice of almost three dozen leading scientists whom the department and the American Heart Association gathered together last year to call for population-wide initiatives to reduce the consumption of sodium. Most importantly, it will save the lives of New Yorkers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person registered to speak is Lori Tansman.
I'm Lori Tansman. I'm employed at the Department of Clinical Nutrition at Mount Sinai Hospital, and I'm also on the faculty of the Department of Preventive Medicine at the Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. I'm speaking on behalf of Mount Sinai, and it was approved last night that I could speak before you today on behalf of my colleagues who are members of the Registered Dieticians' Nutritionist Chapter of New York Region of the Daxa, of which I am the founding president. I am speaking in support of the proposed amendment to Article 81 of the Health Code, but only if the threshold for identifying high-sodium items is lowered to greater than 500 milligrams per day. Let me explain. I was initially excited about the proposed amendment because it is probably the first such regulation in this country. Over the past decade, New York City has been a trendsetter in passing nutrition-related rules, especially the trans fat ban implemented in 2007 and calorie labeling implemented in 2008. Prior to 2007, several food companies were already reducing the trans fat content of their products, but when that landmark ruling was approved, it had an incredible domino effect in this country not previously seen. It seemed that overnight, food companies across the nation were reformulating their products to remove trans fat. A similar effect needs to occur for sodium, because as your fact sheet, quote-unquote, "high-sodium warning labeling," why it matters states, quote-unquote, "restaurants and processed foods are the largest source of dietary sodium, accounting for 77% of dietary sodium." The objective of any regulation to help achieve a reduction in sodium intake needs to impact on the food that is being provided, not just about educating consumers. So in coming back to our support of this amendment, you need to significantly lower the rule for the proposed use of the icon. That will put the pressure on the food industry to reevaluate the sodium content of all foods being provided to the public. The proposed use of a high-sodium icon should be allocated to foods providing greater than 500 milligrams of sodium per serving. This is derived as follows. While both the 2005 and 2010 Dietary Guidelines for Americans recommend that Americans consume less than 2,300 milligrams of sodium per day, and that is the upper limit set by the Food and Nutrition Board of the Institute of Medicine, the 2005 Dietary Guidelines further recommend that, quote-unquote, "individuals with hypertension, Blacks, and middle-aged and older Americans aim to consume no more than 1,500 milligrams of sodium per day." And the 2010 Dietary Guidelines recommend that Americans, quote-unquote, "further reduce intake to 1,500 milligrams among persons who are 51 and older and those of any age who are African-American or have hypertension, diabetes, or chronic kidney disease." Furthermore, the AI, which is the adequate intake, as recommended by the Food and Nutrition Board, doesn't exceed 1,500 milligrams per day for any life-stage group. Thus, 1,500 milligrams per day should serve as a standard. And if we consider that the average person usually has three meals daily, then the average sodium content of each meal should not exceed 500 milligrams. Hence, my recommendation that the proposed rule identify menu items containing greater than 500 milligrams of sodium. We would also like to suggest that you consider expanding this amendment to include all restaurants. As for the notice of intention for the proposed amendment dated June 10, 2015, it is stated that this amendment will affect one-third of all restaurant traffic in New York City. So your proposal will not impact a majority. One of the reasons that's been offered is it may be a burden to individual restaurants to comply, presumably because they may not have standardized recipes for their ongoing menu items. That I question. I think they're more standardized than we realize. But feasibility to calculate the sodium content, as well as the complete nutritional information for any standard menu item, can be done online using a USDA psychoreciproccy analysis, such as that on SuperTracker. Yes, you may need to give such establishments a later date to comply compared to the chain restaurants that already have the information available, but you can't ignore the majority of restaurant traffic in New York City. In summary, if you are really sincere in your intent to get New Yorkers to reduce their sodium intake, then the rule for identifying high-sodium foods must be reduced to greater than 500 milligrams per serving, and we recommend be applied to all food establishments. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person registered to speak is Dr. Marie Bragg.
Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me here today to speak on sodium warning labels for menu items containing high amounts of sodium. My name is Dr. Marie Bragg, and I am an Assistant Professor in the Department of Population Health at the NYU School of Medicine with a joint appointment at the NYU College of Global Public Health. For most of my comments, I'm going to focus on the type of research that I do in food labeling and food policy, and so I won't spend as much time on some of the facts that are already being covered on sodium intake and risk for health problems. What I want to emphasize is the science of nutrition labeling and what we know about the ideal conditions where consumers can benefit from labels. So studies investigating the effectiveness of food labeling have showed that labels on packaged food and at point-of-sale have been successful in increasing consumer awareness of nutrition information and increase consumers' ability to accurately assess the nutritional profiles of those foods. So let me summarize briefly a few of the most relevant research findings from some of our studies and other studies that can inform discussions regarding this label. An extensive review of front-of-packaged-food labeling and shelf labeling and menu labeling demonstrates that clear, easy-to-understand text with large, legible fonts enables consumers to accurately understand labels and make accurate assessments of the nutrition labeling systems and also the various nutrition components of the food and beverage products. This is important because studies have shown that consumers consistently well underestimate the amount of sodium in food products. Secondly, easy-to-understand and easy-to-see symbols, like traffic lights, colored traffic labels, symbols, checkmarks, are identified by consumers as easy to understand and also aid in correctly identifying which products have which levels of given nutrients. Finally, one study demonstrated that only six out of over 4,000 customers from eight restaurants like McDonald's, Burger King, Starbucks, so that's less than 1%, access nutrition information from pamphlets or brochures that were available either behind the counter or up against the wall, which emphasizes the critical need for information provided at point-of-purchase or on menus, such as the proposal that's being described Taken with the evidence about the relationship with sodium intake and cardiovascular disease risk among individuals who already have high blood pressure, these findings indicate that labels that visually alert consumers to excess sodium content can be an important element for policies designed to improve the information present at the restaurants in New York City. I also wanted to address another aspect of our research, which is how industry responds to policies that might promote public health. And so one of the arguments that I wanted to emphasize especially is that the argument that warning labels or labels do nothing to educate consumers, which is a direct contradiction to food industry calls to educate consumers. And so the idea of having a label that indicates that a dish is high-sodium is consistent with many of their calls to support education, to inform consumers. Furthermore, tobacco labels and front-of-packaged labels effectively inform consumers about the profiles of the products that they were potentially going to consume. Finally, there are comments about changes in sodium affecting taste and therefore affecting sales and therefore affecting the company's bottom lines. And while it is difficult for companies to slash the sodium overnight, companies have successfully reformulated products without problem. And so one example of that with a different nutrient is General Mills' reduction of sugar content of their cereals, which began in 2007, and they're continuing to pursue that effort to reduce their cereal sugar content to single digits. And so these pieces of evidence suggest that these reductions are feasible, and as other colleagues have mentioned, that reformulation may be a potential side effect with these sodium labels on the packaging. So in conclusion, I wanted to mention that the negative health effects associated with excess sodium consumption have been well-defined and already mentioned, and labels on tobacco and food packaging have proven effective in informing consumers about the health risks associated with various consumer products. The most effective labels are ones that are easy to read, easy to find, and easy to understand, which is consistent with the proposal being discussed today. The sodium warning would provide an even playing field and allow for consumers to better assess the products that are present in restaurants and fast-food menus. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person registered to speak is Robert Sunshine.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you on this issue. My name is Robert Sunshine. I am the Executive Director of the National Association of Theater Owners of New York State. We are a not-for-profit organization representing movie theaters across the state. In New York City alone, we represent approximately 312 screens and employ approximately 1,800 people. I've submitted written testimony for you, but I will only summarize five of the points that I submitted. First, we believe that the Board of Health is premature with this amendment to the Health Code. As you know, this amendment was introduced along with the menu labeling requirements to bring New York City's menu regulations up to speed with the federal regulations. Yet, the federal regulations have been delayed for at least one year. Accordingly, both the menu labeling and sodium amendments to the Health Code, we feel, should also be delayed. Second, setting the sodium level at 2,300 milligrams is a policy decision, much like 16 ounces of soda, and one that should be left to the elected legislature. Third, Congress clearly set the policy on menu regulations under the ACA or Obamacare. These regulations mention sodium only as part of the additional information available upon request labeled for menus. If the Congress wanted actual sodium levels, they would have included them in the ACA. Fourth, the ACA clearly preempt states and localities from having additional or different nutritional labeling requirements. Simply put, this salt shaker icon is a label that indicates 2,300 milligrams or more of sodium. However, no such sodium menu labeling exists in the federal requirements, so there cannot be sodium menu labeling in the New York City requirements. Fifth, we think advertisements, education, nutrition, apps, and collaborating with the affected businesses would be much more effective than this sodium label. If this measure passes, we fear that menu boards will show less food than warnings, and it will look more like a subway map than a menu. Just for the record, the largest popcorns that are sold in movie theaters are less than the 2,300 milligrams. The best thing for the health of the business community is that the Board of Health puts down the salt shaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person is Sheila Feinberg.
Press the red button there to put the mic. There we go. Great. Good afternoon. My name is Sheila Feinberg, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Asian-American Children and Families. CACF is a membership organization with almost 50 Asian-led and Asian-serving community and social service member organizations, serving in a multitude of different ethnic Asian communities. We are the only Pan-Asian children's advocacy organization, and we work to improve the health and well-being of Asian-Pacific-American children and families in New York. And as you'll note, CACF coordinates the Asian-Pacific-Americans' Healthy Eating and Active Living in Our Neighborhoods, or as we call it, APA Healing, a collaborative with the goal of addressing food systems, healthy eating, active living, and built-environment disparities and inequities in the APA communities in New York City. We want to thank you for holding this important hearing. We -- I'm just going to paraphrase here a little bit in the interest of time. We support the proposed sodium warning amendment to the New York City's Health Code. We think it's a reasonable and measured approach to informing consumers about the health risks associated with high-sodium restaurant dishes. Public health researchers have long called for actions to reduce sodium intake, to prevent strokes, heart attacks, and other diseases associated with excessive sodium in the diet. In New York City, the prevalence of hypertension falls disproportionately on communities of color, and the behaviors that lead to diet-related chronic diseases start at an early age. Approximately 58% of New York City children ages 6 to 12 who identify as Hispanic or Asian-Pacific Islander consume often salty, fast food at least once a week. Sodium intake is high among East Asian diets, particularly Japanese, Chinese, and Korean. Besides salt, Asian restaurants use seasonings and condiments that contain high-sodium content, including, but not limited to, agi noamoto, which is MSG, shrimp paste, ponzu sauce, fish sauce, black bean sauce, soy sauce, all those great sauces that we enjoy in the restaurants, have a lot of salt. And for example, a teaspoon of fish sauce contains 437 milligrams of sodium, which roughly comprises 20% of the 2,300-milligram sodium maximum consumption that the guidelines recommend. So we are, from personal experience and working with our members, very supportive of this. In conclusion, placing warning labels on food items high in sodium will not only address the health of the general public, but will increase cost-saving through reduced utilization of medical services. While table salt is considered one of the biggest sources of sodium, ethnic Asian communities often use flavoring items specific to one's own culture. It is important to take that into account culturally-specific seasonings and condiments when affixing a sodium warning label to particular food items. So thank you for this opportunity to provide commentary, and we hope that we'll move forward with this favorably. Susan Ryan is next.
Hi, my name is Ryan. I'm the Health Policy Coordinator at CACF. And so further echoing what Sheila has mentioned, we definitely would like to recommend to the Department of Health and the Board of Health to actually look at a lot of restaurants that are culturally-specific within particular neighborhoods. We know that it's a great opportunity to actually address large-scale restaurant chains, but a lot of the times, a lot of local neighborhood restaurants or food gatherings might also have sodium that can be overlooked through Article 81. So we definitely would recommend looking at a lot of -- working with community partners, actually going to various neighborhoods and working with them. We'd also like to mention that other communities might not just see salt. As we've mentioned regarding Asian-American community, a lot of the communities don't use just salt alone, so there might be other culturally-specific or other traditional seasonings or condiments that might also be used to flavor food, and that can contribute to large sodium increases. So we actually recommend the Board of Health also look at culturally-specific ways of flavoring seasoning as well. And I think we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Do you have written comments?
Yes, we did. We emailed it to--
You didn't email them? Okay, thank you. There's a third person from your organization. Is she going to be speaking?
Yes, it's just the two of us.
Okay, thank you. The next person registered to speak is James Fersake. Is he here? When she speaks, you'll just indicate what your name is and your association. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Joan McGlocken, and I'm the Vice President of Food Policy at the National Restaurant Association. The Association appreciates the opportunity to provide oral and written comments on the Board of Health's proposed amendment to Health Code Article 81 to add a new section requiring chain food service establishments with 15 or more locations nationally to identify any menu items containing 2,300-milligram sodium or more by adding to menus a specified warning symbol and statement regarding the risk of increased blood pressure, heart disease, and stroke. The Association is the leading business association for the restaurant and food service industry, which is comprised of 1 million locations, employing 14 million people, who serve over 130 million guests daily. Restaurateurs are primarily small businesses, and the industry is integral to the economy and job creation. In fact, every $1 spent in New York's restaurants generates an additional 88 cents in sales for the economy, and every extra $1 million spent in New York restaurants generates an additional 20.6 jobs in the state. In 2015, restaurants account for nearly 800,000 jobs in New York and 90% of employment in the state. New York City has a particularly high number of eating and drinking establishments, and thus a high number of restaurants employees impacted by regulations. Our members agree with the Board that sodium reduction is important to the national discussion on health and wellness. To that end, the Association is supportive of voluntary, uniform efforts to sodium reduction. To be effective, however, we believe any approach to inform consumers or to reduce dietary intake of sodium should focus on whole dietary patterns, which we believe is a better approach to health and wellness than a single focus on particular nutrients or particular foods. We support working collaboratively with all stakeholders and broadening discussions towards a national dialogue on healthy eating, increased physical activity, and expanded consumer education. Indeed, restaurants across the country have voluntarily added more healthful items to menus, reformulated existing offerings, decreased portion sizes, and decreased sodium in their offerings. Some have made public commitments regarding sodium reductions; others have taken more of a self-help approach. Through these efforts, the industry has seen consumer demand for healthful nutritional items increase, both among children and adults. Under the Affordable Care Act, chain restaurants and central retail food establishments will be required to post calorie information and make available to consumers additional nutritional information, including information on sodium levels, for standard menu items, so that consumers will be presented with such information in a single, uniform way, and will have one consistent standard to evaluate the nutritional values of their food. In taking this action, Congress recognized that the former patchwork of safety local requirements were confusing to consumers, inefficient, and costly to industry. Restaurants across the nation will soon be updating their menus and menu boards to provide such information in a uniform, understandable way. The Board's proposal is in conflict with the uniform federal approach because it declares that information and education on sodium are not enough, and that consumers must be warned about certain high-sodium foods. Moreover, the proposed warnings are premature, given that federal menu labeling will soon take effect, and the impact of making sodium information more widely and consistently available-- warned about certain high-sodium foods. Moreover, the proposed warnings are premature, given that federal menu labeling will soon take effect, and the impact of making sodium information more widely and consistently available has not yet been evaluated. We believe that posting warning labels on menus is not an effective strategy for the reasons articulated herein and in our extensive written comments, which we filed earlier today. Our view is that the proposal is arbitrary and capricious, violates the separation of powers doctrine, and would compel speech in violation of the First Amendment. The proposal's failure to take into account a dissuading federal mandate that ensures consumer access to information is profound. Separately, with FDA's recent extension of the compliance date for menu labeling to December 2016, the New York City proposal, which would be effective December 2015, also would create significant implementation issues due to the conflicting timelines. FDA has established a single, uniform, effective date. This date was recently adjusted to ensure in part that restaurants can make a smooth, cost-effective transition, being a changing over menus in a reasonable, planned manner. The proposal would remove that assurance for restaurants within New York City. We think the Board should unilaterally withdraw its proposal and focus instead on constructive, lawful means by which to address consumer awareness of sodium and other nutrient content in the foods we consume. Thank you very much.
Mr. Versaki? Could you put your mic on?
Thank you very much. We did hear you.
The reporter heard you. Try to do it again. Yeah. And just if our speakers would just speak a little bit more slowly, so the reporter can get your remarks.
Thank you very much. My name is James Versaki. I'm counsel to the New York City chapter of the New York State Restaurant Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Melissa Attilio Fleischer, the President and CEO of the Association. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for having this hearing, and I'd like to thank all of the staff of the Department of Health, who works tirelessly to protect the citizens of New York City. The Association has worked very hard to cultivate a relationship with the Department, to work cohesively together to try to develop sound policy. And while we generally try to support the proposals that come out from the Department of Health, we are here today to present the hospitality industry's concerns about and objection to the proposed Health Code Section 81.49. The basis for the objections are threefold, as we stand here today. One is the duplicative nature that these menu changes will have, and that they're inconsistent with existing federally mandated menu labeling changes that are already scheduled to take place in 2016. We believe they're based upon an arbitrary selected standard for the application of additional labeling requirements. And third, that unfortunately, these rulemaking is beyond the established authority of the DOH to establish such mandates. I will address these each in turn. First, the proposed enactment of federal of Section 81.49 is premised upon the Department's desire to have the code mandate additional menu labeling requirements on chain establishments. Under already enacted federal law, chain establishments will be required to update their menus to include new posting requirements and make nutritional information available to consumers upon request, which does include sodium levels in food. These federal requirements were initially set to be implemented on December 1, 2015, and just last week, the Department of Health held hearings on New York City parallel labeling requirements. The sole basis cited in the Department's 2015 menu labeling requirements was, quote, "so that the Department's requirements are identical to the federal requirements that will go into effect on December 1, 2015," close quote. And correspondingly, the sodium warning contained in Article 81.49 was meant to also take effect on that same date, which is not a coincidence. By notice dated July 10, 2015, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services delayed the implementation of the new federal menu labeling requirements. And I note, its delay, not revoke, until December 1, 2016. This was delayed to allow sufficient time for the affected industries to develop and implement the menu labeling. This logical process allows certainty for the impacted restaurants, as they will not be subject to potentially divergent New York City and federal regulations if the city continues to adhere to the December 1, 2015 implementation date. Therefore, we're asking that you at least consider making sure that there's uniformity for those impacted restaurants by making sure that these regulations are put in effect in a timely manner, consistent with federal law, which we hope you will also do based on the menu labeling requirements that the city is seeking to implement separate and apart from 81.49. Unfortunately, we also believe that the proposed sodium warning standards are arbitrary. Rulemaking by its nature is arbitrary when it is not based on sound science or supported by independent research developed by the agency proposing a new rule. We believe that the proposed rule is not supported by any independent research to support the 2,300-milligram threshold for the proposed warning notice. The threshold set forth in 81.49 was adopted by simply selecting the daily recommended maximum intake on sodium and using that recommended maximum to create a ban. As noted by other speakers today, there is no proof that the dietary guidelines on sodium cited by the DOM, the Department of Health, were ever intended to be utilized to support mandatory warning labels. There's also -- the rule's also arbitrary, and there's a practical concern that must be considered here. It's arbitrary because it will desperately target particular types of food as unhealthy and thereby act as a ban on that type of food. Consider a pizza pie advertised on a menu board, which would be subject to the proposed rule and require a sodium warning. In that case, the warning label would be disingenuous, as no one eats a full pizza pie, and the label would place a stigma on that food at a particular food service establishment covered by that rule, whereas the same pizza at a non-covered restaurant, potentially operating next door or two doors down, would not face the same consumer bias. Hence, the proposed rule would arbitrarily harm businesses that serve a certain type of food, and it not be based on the amount of sodium that a customer will actually ingest. Rather, it is being based on a serving method. That impact is arbitrary and cannot stand. Finally, the Department's proposed sodium warning exceeds its authority under the New York City Charter and well-established separation of powers doctrine, as it crosses the line into prohibited policymaking, which is the exclusive domain of the New York City Council. The Department's past efforts to establish arbitrary standards to regulate food consumption have been soundly rebuffed by the courts. As recently as 2014, we're all familiar with the Portion Control legislation and the litigation that ensued. In that case, the Department's efforts to limit consumer choice through the Portion Control of Soda were struck down by the New York State Court of Appeals, New York's highest court. While the Department has attempted to frame Section 81.49 as a warning label to avoid venturing into improper policymaking, such language is a distinction without a difference. The proposed sodium warning is a value judgment by the Department and the city as to what amount of sodium is harmful or patrons of restaurants, and that by its very nature is policymaking and not rulemaking. Prohibited policymaking as opposed to rulemaking will be found where an agency acts without guidance from a legislative body. Such was the case in the Portion Control litigation, where the Department was policymaking policy without guidance from the City Council. And I think it's important to note that the City Council's inaction on sodium warnings indicates that Section 81.49 constitutes policymaking versus rulemaking. The Department should also consider that the City Council has been considering and is actively considering legislation on sodium consumption, and at least two bills, one during this session and one during the last session. These bills demonstrate that the Council has not foresworn its right to make policy in this area of health regulation, and for that reason, the DOH should not venture into the City Council's domain again. For the reasons set forth herein and also based on the written submission of the National Restaurant Association, which the state association is adopting by reference into our comments, we ask the DOH to not enact the proposed Section 81.49 at this time. We believe it is a gateway to the regulation of food content that the DOH or the city will deem ill-advised to eat, and if passed, will undoubtedly one day lead to warnings on thousands of types of food based on their components. One day, it could be ice cream, soda, popcorn, pizza pies. Next, maybe it'll be gluten or some other allergen that is deemed appropriate to be regulated by the Department. And the concern at some point is that warning labels and the confluence of warnings on menus will lead to a collective shrug by consumers, as the warnings will have no meaning, as every item on a menu will be flagged as inappropriate in one way or another. And for these reasons, we ask you to reconsider this rule, to work with the industry, which we look forward to working with you on, and we will rely on the rest of our written comments. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. The last person who is registered to speak is Robin Vitale.
Thank you. My name is Robin Vitale, and I'm here to represent the view of the American Heart Association and American Stroke Association in support of this proposal. It is the opinion of our organization, based upon a thorough review of the supportive evidence, that New York City should require restaurants to warn diners when menu items exceed dangerous limits of sodium. For all extensive purposes, much of my testimony that's been submitted electronically has already been mentioned, so I'm going to do my best to synopsize. But there is a tremendous burden on our community regarding hypertension. Close to 80 million Americans are diagnosed with high blood pressure, and if we look through the lens of health equity concerns, that concern becomes even more dramatic. The African-American community has among the highest prevalence of high blood pressure in the world, and among non-Hispanic black men and women, the age-adjusted prevalence of hypertension was 44.9% and 46.1% respectively. When compared with whites, blacks develop high blood pressure earlier in life, and their average blood pressure is much, much higher. Knowing the potential impact that sodium consumption can have on our physiology, it's imperative that we take appropriate measures to lower intake. While the American Heart Association has been working steadfastly to educate and inform our population on the dangers of excessive salt in our diets, we know that right now more than 75% of the sodium we consume comes from packaged or restaurant food items. As consumers, we deserve the right to choose how much sodium we eat. However, that decision is often being made for us when we dine out at restaurants. We now spend most of our, almost half of our food budget, on foods eaten outside of the home. Thus, it's an appropriate step to warn restaurant patrons if any food items on the menu contain dangerous levels of sodium. Many restaurant meals exceed the recommended levels for daily consumption. The 2010 dietary guidelines, which we've heard so much about, recommend limiting sodium to less than 2,300-milligrams per day, and approximately six in 10 adults should further limit their sodium to 1,500-milligrams a day. Yet unfortunately, most Americans consume close to 3,500-milligrams of sodium, much more than the recommended daily limit, and individuals should be empowered with the opportunity to choose healthier, smarter items. This can happen when we warn those diners that food items have 2,300-milligrams of sodium. This has already been seen in the localities that have implemented mandatory menu labeling, where that policy has been associated with healthier choices, and we would expect this policy to have the same effect. By placing the sodium warning icon on menus, restaurants are further establishing themselves as true partners in the national movement to improve our public health. This standard should be easily achieved by larger restaurant chains, in this instance, those that have 15 or more locations across the country. These restaurants maintain a very careful control of their menu items, allowing for uniformity for food preparation and portion sizes. Accurate nutrient composition databases are widely available and can make it easier for all restaurants to calculate sodium content for food items. Consumers need and deserve to know how much sodium they are ingesting, and restaurants should provide this customer service in a simple and transparent manner, which we believe is embodied by the sodium warning icon proposal. Not included in my testimony, but just a reminder for the Board, you all led the country back in 2006 around the menu labeling proposal. We see here we are nine years later, and we are still waiting for those -- the federal guidelines to be implemented. I encourage you once again to take the leadership role here in New York City and move forward with the sodium proposal, so once again, we can lead the nation and address this important issue. So on behalf of the American Heart Association and American Stroke Association, thank you so much for the opportunity to share our support of this proposal, and we look forward to its implementation.
Thank you. I have no other persons on my list registered to speak. Is there anybody here present who wishes to speak, who hasn't registered? If not, this hearing is going to be adjourned until about, I guess, 3:30.
This is the big part. It's what it's going to be.
It is now 3:30, and there being no people here to testify, the hearing is further adjourned to five minutes before four. It is now seven minutes of four, and there being no persons present to testify, this hearing is closed.